This conference will now be recorded.
Woodburn City Council is returning from executive session. No action was taken by the council on executive session. And we are returning now to regular session.
Regular session is open, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council authorize city staff to initiate against Marion County, whatever enforcement action is necessary, up to and including litigation, to ensure that Marion County is in compliance with the Woodburn Land Use Regulations applicable to 821 Evergreen Road.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. We will now enter a period of discussion. And we'll start with public discussion. And we've had one person sign up to to add to that discussion, and that is Lori Cox.
Hi, I'm Lori Cox, a resident of the Woodburn Estates in Gulf and also a realtor in the area. So this coming from also sit on the Woodburn Chamber of Commerce Board. And I'm an advisory for the board to the Tourism Committee. So to get blindsided by this a day or two ago was quite shocking. I realize I missed one meeting, but I don't think I missed a conversation about this. My concerns, one, as somebody on the Tourism Advisory Committee and the Woodburn Chamber, which both benefit from the tout money, I strongly would love to have that money. There's just no two ways about it. That's a huge bonus for us. I also see a huge advantage of if a contract was drawn up for the meals, which I'm sure would be part of the project, that it would be a benefit huge and put priority since this whole mess is about COVID, huge priority to the small business owner, not the big conglomerates, but the small business owners of the different restaurants and catering services in Woodburn, since the impact would be here if that's where it does actually end up. So that would be a huge influx of reliable money into the local economy here, which would be a bonus. Given that, I realize it's a state mandate. I'm not too sure if it's federal mandate, but it is a state mandate. But we do have some federal money and we do have, is it FEMA money? I think it is, that would be coming in. And so that would be really nice to garner a lot of that. Given that, I did a little bit of demographic look because I know just in the estates, we have over 2,550 residents deeded to the houses. And I think that's a very conservative estimate of who's living in the houses. Just that, which is literally within blocks of the Super Eight. And then we have eight assisted care, independent rehab facilities right within less than a mile, all the way around that, that predominantly are 55-plus environment and obviously the most vulnerable ones. So that really concerns me. Again, the Hispanics have been addressed as, according to Science Protocols, as being, for whatever reason, also a more vulnerable group than a standard white American female or male as at least what they're coming up with numbers at the moment. So that's a disproportionately huge vulnerable group. Plus probably a huge part of our group is young children. And Walmart is a favorite place for them to be. So my concerns would really be that the safety and the security of this, if it does end up here, definitely be monitored. And complacency doesn't set in as it continues clear to June, if that's what's going to happen. So I see both sides. We've got a huge impact monetarily that would be great. But there's, given a 55-plus profile, my, many of you know, my late husband passed away of an early onset dementia. And dementia is a huge part of our community. And paranoia is extreme with dementia. So we're going to be dealing with that clientele no matter what. And we need to be ready to deal with that. As a realtor, I'm very concerned because I spend an awful lot of my time selling Woodburn and trying to overcome perceptions that are out there that are inaccurate. And I don't think this was helpful because again, it brought us up in the news, not in the best of highlights. So those are my main concerns and those are what I wanted to speak to today.
Thank you, Lori. We have no one else who signed up, but if there was someone from the public that would like to speak, we have three-minute chunks for you. So I'm gonna, you'd have to wave your hand. How would, how would they let you know?
They could unmute their
You could just unmute yourself and announce your name and address. And if there's anyone who'd like to speak, we'll give a little time for you to figure out how to unmute, which I'm still trying to do.
My address is 1700 Rainier Road.
I don't visit anybody.
Okay. Okay, then we'll open this up for discussion amongst, amongst the council.
Well, where do we start? The first thing I want to say is I want to make it perfectly clear that this is not a joint venture between the city of Woodburn and Marion County. Marion County made this decision without consulting the city of Woodburn, without consulting or coming before the city council and without providing any opportunity for community input or to allow anyone within the Woodburn community to voice their concerns and have their questions answered. I know that there are several questions out there related to the safety protocols, exactly who and what is going into the facility. We've heard different rumors and most of us unfortunately are getting our information from the newspapers and that I'm finding to be unconscionable. Marion County needed to come before the city council and be open and honest and forthcoming with this proposal and give us and our citizens in our community the opportunity to ask those questions. As it was mentioned earlier, Woodburn is a hotspot. We were identified as a hotspot and quickly we reacted and have been working very hard within our community, with our community leaders, with different populations, with our faith-based partners to help educate our citizens, to make sure that our citizens have the protective gear that they need in order to maintain their safety. We have been working hard and we have brought those numbers down. But our, our work is not over. And to have a group of people who are actively still with COVID bussed in or brought into our community without knowing what those safety protocols are, what those guidelines are, how we're going to keep our, our entire community safe, I find reprehensible. So that's how I wanted to open it up.
I'd like to compliment Counselor Ellsworth on what she said. And I, I agree fully with it. And I might add to Counselor Ellsworth's commentary that this process was not only as she described, but it was also absent a public process, which should have occurred.
And I, like, I, I agree. It's a great idea. It's, it's needed in this county. It's just the fact that they did not tell us, there was no, they didn't come to us. We didn't partner with them. We, nothing was discussed among us. So this was just a decision that was made and we were just kind of told out of the blue, like, hey, this is going to happen and that's basically it. And so I just want to let the public know that we did not, we weren't aware about this.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Morris?
Good afternoon, everybody. Take a deep breath before I start talking. The, the, the one point, one of the first points I want to make is that I do not think this is a bad idea to have a COVID isolation facility. And I think if Marion County would have came to Woodburn and said, hey, this is what we want to do, we probably could have found a location that was suitable for that. A quick search of the internet shows there's easily 15 hotels in Salem. I mean, it's a lot bigger community. We got four out by the freeway, it looks like. So, you know, that's, that's the biggest disappointment for me that there wasn't a process. And then when, when we let the community know that, hey, this was coming, you know, I, I've said it to many people, we have never, I personally in 10 years on the council, never seen this kind of outreach from the community coming back to us to say, hey, this is, this is how we feel about it. People are afraid, people are concerned, people are angry because there wasn't any community process. And, you know, the Board of Commissioners, that's, that's a full-time job for them. There are professional politicians running the county. And it's so disappointing for me to, to watch their meeting and them say, hey, we know there's some concerns, this is happening, we've got to do this. So, yeah, I've, I've received over 40 emails directly to me at the city saying, hey, this isn't a, this isn't a good thing for the community. So as a community leader, I have to, that's part of my decision-making process because my initial thought was, gee, this doesn't sound like a good, a good thing. And the community has overwhelmingly said the same thing. So, and to, some of the comments have already been made about the perception of Woodburn. I think, you know, to a certain extent, I feel like the county just said, hey, little Woodburn up there, we can just go in and do what we want to do. And it feels much more like they're telling us where they're going to do something instead of asking us. And I've said it many times, good government doesn't work that way. So I, I hope we can work this out. And I think that's probably a common sentiment amongst the counselors. But at this point, I think, you know, we need to listen to the population and do what's right for our community.
Mr. Mayor? I heartily agree with the comments from Counselor Ellsworth and Counselor Morris. Being counselor for Ward Four and living in the Woodburn Estates in Gulf, I'm very near the Super Eight Hotel. I have been inundated with emails like Counselor Morris, our constituents or my constituents are extremely concerned about this. And I'm just hoping that, you know, that the, that the city, the community realizes that we were not informed of this. So I'm kind of repeating what everyone said, but I think they need to hear it from all of us that we were taken by surprise. And furthermore, I was also told that there was, that our particular HOA was trying to do something on a legal basis, like a injunction. But I think that information was not exactly correct after talking to the site manager a few minutes ago. So at least our people around here, our senior citizens are so concerned that they are having a protest at 3:00 in front of the motel. It'll be a peaceful protest. And I just want everyone to know that this council is committed to following the law of order and doing what's best for our community.
Anyone else?
Well, I'd like to go again, but if anyone wants to talk first, I'm willing to hold my comments.
Mr. Mayor, I might add in a few comments if I could just at the end here. I do think it's important for the city council to know that when the staff warned about this, I warned about it on Tuesday, June 16th from a telephone call, county. I was surprised about the, the, the project. We have since had dialogue with Marion County. We've expressed concerns that we've heard from our community to Marion County around the, the lack of a public involvement process and specific concerns about the site and the location that they've selected. All, all things we think could have been resolved had there been more dialogue and, and coordination with the city. To their credit, the county has acknowledged the lack of collaboration as, and described it as an information gap that occurred. And I want you to know that this week I did extend an offer to the Marion County Board of Commissioners to invite them to a city council meeting in July to initiate a process and have a public dialogue, something that I understood to have been not consistent with the timeline for opening on July 1. I did, I did make those offers and we have raised those issues with the county to date. And I think it's important that you, you know that, that we've done our best to try to represent the interest of the community and the concerns that we have about the site and, and, you know, just advocating for a due diligence process that involves our community members and, and also makes a kind of analysis on site locations that are consistent with our existing rules here in Woodburn. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll say, I still have a comment if, if I could.
Sure, please.
Okay, and I know that we've heard a lot about the senior population. It is close to the senior population. I am also concerned about other members of our community. I'm concerned about, one, I will just say this right off the bat. I'm offended that they have kind of thrown our migrant worker population in with parolees and in with homeless people. They, I, I recognize that our migrant workers need a place to isolate. And I believe that our migrant population has, because they've got families here, because they're of the living situations and different things, that what their needs are is not the same. They don't need, our migrant population doesn't need to be separated from their families and dropped into a hotel with people on parole and signing codes of conduct and, and being subjected to the same restrictions as somebody that's coming out of incarceration. I'm actually offended that we just threw the migrant, that Marion County just threw the migrant farmworkers into that category. That offends me just flat out. I'm also concerned really about the people, the staff that work at the hotel. Who's going to be doing the laundry? Who's going to be bringing the meals? And if those people are most likely going to be Woodburn residents who are then going to be exposed to not just people who have been exposed to COVID, but people infected with COVID. So I'm a housekeeper, I'm a small business delivering food. How can I keep those residents safe? The person that cleans the room and then goes across to Wal, and cleans an infected person's room, goes across to Walmart, goes shopping for their family and then goes home or goes across the street and goes shopping at the outlet mall. I'm concerned about not just the residents in the, right around there, but everyone that's coming in contact with this facility. We, we know that we have a number of at-risk populations based on age, based on access to healthcare, based on all kinds of issues that we have been trying very hard to address in a compassionate, sensitive, culturally aware methodology. And to have this being put into our community in this manner is offensive to me. It's insulting to our community. And I'm going to use the word reprehensible again. So I just wanted to put that out there because I know that it's easy to say senior estate, but this is going to impact our entire community.
Thank you, Lisa. I have something to add to that. I live less than a mile from this motel down in downtown. And we haven't received information clearly where the individuals, once they're released from, if they come two weeks, whatever, once they're released, how are we assured that they're taken somewhere other or just released into our community? We cannot support a, a larger population of homeless people, nor do we have resources for inmates to be looking for work. I mean, it, it's just really confusing. I was all for if, if it was to house local residences that needed a home. I'm, I'm for that. I'm still for that. I, I believe that we could manage that and it's a compassionate thing to do to keep members of the community within our community. But to bring people in that, that I don't think we are able to be responsible for in the long run is just a big, big, big concern, big concern.
So just to piggyback off of what U2 said, is my game? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if there's anything that I can do or, I mean, if we can show up to meetings, have these conversations, because I have a list of questions that I would love to ask the county that I need answers to, that I want answers to because of our, for our community. You know, and one of them has to do with what Counselor Cornwall just said. Are we going to, are they going to put first priority to our community members that need to be isolated, that need to quarantine? You know, a lot of family members, especially Latinx community, in our Latinx community, they are double-duped. They, you know, because of, in houses, you know, there's double families living there. You know, especially in those, in farmworkers who are living on the farm, things like that, that can't isolate. So I think that, like how Counselor Cornwall said, I think that is very important, that it is needed for that, for, for our community. But again, the way things were, went about, everything that was, how everything happened was just not correct. And it's just not a, like, it, it just wasn't something that I personally agree with. So I would definitely love to like send them my list or show up to a meeting and have those questions to see if they could answer them. Because I think
To our meeting and answer our question.
When I, I would have, I have a quick comment. So that's a great point. I totally, Debbie, I appreciate that point because what I've seen in the past few days from the, the county commissioners, I've seen emails that have been posted, them responding to constituents in Marion County that have expressed concerns, which is, I think, super important. I'm also a Marion County constituent and I emailed them earlier in the week and said, hey, I apologize for not having a better relationship with the county commissioners where I could just pick up the phone and say, what is going on? So I, I'm pledging to work harder at that as we move forward. But realistically, they, you know, especially with COVID, everybody's getting a good lesson in civics of how, you know, the state runs things, how counties run things and how cities run things. And I think that, you know, Commissioner Cameron said it in his meeting yesterday, he gets paid to make tough decisions. Well, you know, I think our, our city council is getting ready to make a tough decision that sends a very clear and concise message back to the county that this is inappropriate for our, for the location they've selected. So I'll leave it at that.
I have another comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I was just wondering if the city has access to the contract that the county commissioner signed with Motel Eight where it outlines who is going to provide the services that we're talking about, food, maid service, all, all of those questions we have.
I think, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Schwab, I think I can answer that. Presently, we don't have that. We need that. I need that. You know, I've been working very hard and there's been looking for that. It was hand-carried apparently onto the agenda and adopted on consent yesterday. So we've been trying to get that. My assistant, Kenji, has been requesting it through the county council's offices, it yet to be provided. So I mean, it's a public document. I mean, we're expecting and have a right to have that document. So good question. We'll keep on it.
Bob, you might want to ask the media to get a copy of it because that's how, it seems to be how we're getting all of our information is through the media. So.
I would love to know.
We've thought about, we've thought about a less direct approach because it's a public document and we want it. I mean, we asked for it, they just ought to give it to us, but so far, no.
So a parting comment that I'll, and then I'll be quiet. Sam Brintano, who I, he grew up in, his family's a Woodburn family. They, they own United Disposal, so they're, they're aware of Woodburn. We bannered back and forth a little bit, but he's asked, where do you suggest they be housed? And I just, and he, he used the term, these people. And I just, I found it very offensive, but maybe it was just kind of off the cuff. But a lot of people have been coming to me and saying, what happened to the fairgrounds? What happened to that, that big preparatory work they did at the fairgrounds? And that's, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Mayor, I know that, I'd just like to add too, that I know that the the city council has a copy of the police chief's letter that was submitted to the county. There are also some legitimate public safety concerns about our first responders and providers we'd like to have addressed too, since we're talking, talking about it. When I first started learning about this, this was, I understood it to be a facility where people who had confirmed exposure to COVID-19 could isolate. I, I've heard just this, well, I can't keep my days wrong and worry here, but recently, well, a day or two, that people with mild symptoms who are diagnosed positive will also be housed, housed at the facility. And so there's questions and impacts to ambulance service and fire and first responders about, you know, what is the plan for providing medical assistance if people need to, if their symptoms worsen and they need to be transported? What is the plan for our police department to respond if there's a security issue or if somebody wanders off-site? These things all need to be addressed, I think, and resolved so that precautions can be placed for our, our first responders who cannot absorb, you know, losing responders to isolate themselves if they're been, been exposed inappropriately. We don't have the depth of service to absorb those kinds of impacts. So I'd just like there to be an awareness that, you know, we've got certainly land use issues. We certainly have these other issues of public concern. But we also have partners and service providers that we also need to include in this.
To protect.
I have a question for the city administrator. Isn't it true that the two form of letters that we wrote were perhaps more, one from our planning director and the other from our police chief, have been ignored?
I'll let them, oh, Counselor, I'll, I'll refer to the city attorney, the police chief and the planning director wrote letters to Marion County. I'll let them respond to the response.
Thank you. This is Chris Currie, Community Development Director. Appreciate it. So the county provided a response to many of the questions that were raised. I'll let the police chief speak to the public safety questions he raised. They responded to many of the questions that were put before them in the letter that I wrote to them, questioning the use, having them explain exactly how it fits into our zoning code. But the most important aspect of this is they did not respond to the most important question and what the whole point of the letter was, which is to specify how they believe they're still operating, would still be operating as a hotel use, which is an allowable use in that district. Because as I expressed to them, it appeared to me that the use that they were proposing would no longer fit into the common understanding of what a hotel is. They deliberately did not respond to that. And when I asked them verbally at the meeting we had a few days before, they were very specifically told me they were not going to respond. And they did not in writing. And that was a very important point.
Thank you, Chris. I think that makes my case.
Hi, Jim Ferreras, Police Chief. I've received some responses to some of the questions raised in my letter. There still are a number of things outstanding that we're working through. The sheriff's office has been very responsive in terms of, of communicating since we learned of this. But we're still waiting for some pretty important details to try to figure out what our response protocols might be and impacts on public safety. One of the things that I'm concerned about is the ability to provide security. I haven't seen a security plan yet. I'm told there, there is one or will be one. But an offer was made to our department to participate in security on a contract basis with the county. And I've declined that because, quite frankly, I don't want to expose Woodburn police personnel to any health hazard because the, the impacts on our department and on our community's public safety could be disastrous if one or more of our folks became positive with the virus. So to that end, we're, we're waiting for some additional details and we're working through some issues and we'll be able to report back when we have those answers.
Thank you, Chief.
Just to kind of piggyback what the chief mentioned. Just to kind of piggyback what the chief mentioned. I think it's very important for us to ask the, also the questions, will like PP be provided, like to everyone? Would, is there going to be a medical onsite staff there? Is there, like, how are we going to know that whoever's working or is going to be in contact with people that are staying in this, in this area? Are they, how are we preventing them from going back to their homes and giving it to their children or giving it to other people? Also, this is a big thing about communication, like we, how is this going to be moving forward for future decisions that the county is going to be wanting to make? This says a lot about the relationship between the county and the city and how, how, moving forward, like this is a bigger issue, right? Like the communication piece where this is the missing component of it, that's very important. So how are we making decisions for people that are like our constituents? But we're not being informed and aren't given the opportunity to, you know, voice our opinion? So I just kind of wanted to put that out there so everyone knows, like, I think the, that's one of the biggest things that's missing is the communications piece. And then how are we going to be able to communicate whether things happen within, inside that motel? Are we going to find out through the media, media? Or who's going to tell us? Like if there's, if, if things happen and go wrong in there, how are we, how, and then who's going to be responsible for that? Is the county going to be responsible for it or are we? How, how is, how are all of those things going to be decided? Who's going to be responsible at the end of the day?
Debbie, I think that brings up a great point. You know, the county has been a, a great partner with Woodburn over the years with our urban growth boundary and many other issues, including the strategic investment program that's coming up that, you know, it's going to bring a bunch of jobs potentially to Woodburn. And yeah, I think we, we need to take a hard look at what has changed, that all of a sudden there is this huge communication gap between us and the county because they have been good partners. Woodburn's growing in all the right ways. So, you know, right now it's very contentious. Everybody's really on edge. And I think that's not just because of this one issue, but you know, just all of the issues that are out there. And I think we do need to take a hard look at that, right? And like I said earlier, I'm going to commit to establishing better relations with them, but I think it's a great reflection, looking back going, yeah, what happened? What, all these questions we have would have been, like, they said they started this back in March. So why, how come we haven't heard? I mean, it's end of June now, so.
Weeks away, yeah.
Yeah. So at this point, I, and I've said this to several people, I, I, this isn't the right place for it. It's just not. So I'll stop talking.
No, I think you're right, Eric. And it's not a matter of not in my backyard. I want to be clear that that's also not where this is coming from. Because I think if they had worked with us, you've mentioned this also, that we could have looked at options that made sense. They are proposing a couple million dollars. For a couple million dollars, they probably could have built a facility that had the medical equipment that was designed for this type of facility. I mean, when it comes to a hotel and, and viruses, hotels are notorious for having soft surfaces that will hold on to viruses, carpeting, beds, you know, surfaces that you, that are very difficult to wipe down and sterilize. And a hotel is, is not a hospital. It's not a medical facility. It's not, I don't believe that a hotel is a good option for this type of containment. Because we are now being told that, that not only are they people who have been exposed, but who have active cases. And we've seen in the media where an active case can go bad very quickly. Or somebody can get exposed and the severe consequences happen very quickly. I agree with you, Eric, that had they come to us, had we been involved in the planning, we probably could have found a site that made sense. Again, I'm not saying not in our backyard, because I know we have people here who would benefit from a place, a safe place to self-isolate. I just don't see that a hotel in the, in the middle of a thriving shopping district with restaurants and other things where people are coming and going. It just increases the potential to have a very bad outcome.
Let me echo all the concerns and statements since everyone else has made. I think that, as Eric mentioned, the, the county has worked well with us on other issues. We've, we've all been at different meetings, you know, whether they're statewide meetings. I know Eric's been on some of those calls, the city manager with all the mayors and, and city councils and city managers from out the state. We've, we've been, Kevin Cameron, one of the commissioners has visited our Chamber of Commerce, did that for three or four weeks in a row. So I guess the disappointing part is when conversations went from, we've all heard about, it's like, yeah, we're looking for housing for people. On one hand, I mean, the people that are houseless, like need a place to be so that they're not spreading, they can be monitored. A separate discussion was migrant farmworkers and like looking for places for, for those are the ones that Debbie mentioned that are just people, people are doubled up and need a place to do that. But just disappointing that those conversations went from that to people that are being released from being incarcerated. Like that was a big leap, right? And then also I think, you know, discussions about, you know, there were vouchers out there for different people, the different hotels we're using and agreeing to. Jumping from that to like, taking over one entire facility and making it for everybody is, was, was a big leap that, that none of us saw, saw coming. It's been gut-wrenching just for since, since the beginning of this to, we've, we've all worked so hard to and, and our, and our own staff and, and it's a role that I took up batting down the stories in, in the, in the press that, and clarifying things. I got into this mayor's race in the beginning, a lot about the image of Woodburn that, that's, that I wanted to join with all of you. And it's been a common theme from all our city staff and, and our city counselors to promote the image of Woodburn and, and, and tell our story. This is gut-wrenching that this is now like part of the story. For all the reasons that you mentioned. And it's particularly difficult now that it's contentious, right? That's, that, and and having, having followed, like many of you did, like on a daily basis, every case that was in Marion County. And then when we had information about our zip code, like every day logging on and like, oh, okay, too many more. Okay, not enough. I mean, just going through that. And then like just many of you addressed this, just the potential, right? The potential for that to, 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 to be in our community is, is, I think, what's, what's driving a lot of the anger and the, and the fear after we spent months and months with anger and fear about the whole COVID case. So forward, I think, you know, when, as, as you, as you heard our city attorney say, like, you know, this, this action that we're about to take is wholly, wholly appropriate, but is a process. And so like realistically and logistically, working with all the questions that you had, that our chief of police have, that our city manager has about like what would this, what this will look like, what are the, what are the safety procedures in, in place that, that going forward? And so I, I welcome and thank, I really want to thank the city manager, the city attorney, Chris, and the chief of police who reacted strongly and forcefully and tried and, and gave, I mean, what we're all saying here and the members of the public and all the things, the emails we're getting. Those things were expressed to the county right away from, by our, by our city staff. And as Eric mentioned, I know that a lot of the emails people have either CC'd us on, but, but spoke directly to, through the county commissioners before their, before their meeting. And just from the public process point of view, people need a place to express their anger and opinions and that, I think the phrase that, that we used, that the, that the county commission like dropped it into a meeting instead of like saying, hey, like, we know a lot of people are angry about this. Here's the meeting. Here's the link. Please come, tell us what you think. Whether the, the choice was already made ahead of that, like that's part of the American process that was not, that was not, not an option for people. And so I'm frustrated with that as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I just wanted, before we kind of wrap things up, I just wanted, you know, and then maybe this is the news clip we can have for the evening news. I just want to truly, truly thank the citizens of Woodburn. Because we asked for their, I asked for their opinion and they came out overwhelmingly. And it wasn't, it wasn't the silent majority. It was the very, very vocal majority. And I truly appreciate that. As an elected official, there's nothing more, we always ask for people to, hey, tell us what you think. And Woodburn did not disappoint. So if there's a positive out of all of this, for me, that's the big positive. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments?
Can I, I'm not part of that board, but can I say something? Okay, there will be a three o'clock, nonviolent, passive gathering in front of the Super Eight at three o'clock. And Jim, I did have Linda call me to find out what she could. I sent her on to the person that asked me to put it next door. But I think we're going to try to, since most of us are a part of the vulnerable group, I think, you know, it will be, unless somebody's crazy that comes into the mix, it's, it's just a statement to say the concern that is going here and to publicly draw attention. And like Eric Swanson said, the mayor, I'm very disappointed in the county commissioner that was in the meetings that I was in and nothing was approached anywhere near to the chamber, you know, board at all. And I'm just, I'm very disappointed in that. And I will, I will directly share that with him. And I saw in the commissioner meeting, he definitely was emotionally spent from this. And I feel for that, but it was a huge oversight.
I think, thanks Laurie for mentioning that. I know that our city manager has mentioned the same thing and, and in my discussions with, I didn't speak to all the county commissioners, but they're, I mean, they're apologizing all over the place. And they apologized in the emails that they sent to, back to people that we've been CC'd on. And he apologized to me personally. And I know he did so with the, with our city manager as well. But the, I think at, at, at the end of the day, we need to now focus on a better public process. We need to focus on having our questions answered from them every, every step of the way. Because this is, this is like not going away, though there'll be, I mean, this is a, a contract, it's for nine months. And maybe cases go down and maybe it's 10 people in a huge hotel and maybe it's more. But I think that, you know, constant communication about this issue and working with the safety issues and the, the public relations issues. Because people are going to want to know all the specifics possible in this case right now. And I think that's what we need from, from the county.
If everybody's done, I'll call the question.
Okay, there's, it's been moved and seconded. And I don't think we need to repeat that, so.
So it's up to you to call for a vote.
Alrighty.
A roll call just because.
Okay. We'll, we'll do a roll call.
Counselor Carney?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Cornwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Aye.
Counselor Shaw?
Aye.
Counselor Morris?
I'll make it unanimous, aye.
Right, motion carries.
I move that we adjourn this special session.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much, counsel.
Thank you all for all of your open and honest comments.
Yep, thank you.
Good work, everybody.
Yes.
Take care.